On the agenda is public comment. I do not see any public. Move on to the action items under number three.
Could I add before you get into that? I would like to add one item to the action items, please. All of you have a copy of the minutes of March 28th, 2018. Special meeting for the purpose of retreat for the Montpelier-Roxbury Board of School Directors.
We could do both minutes, I think, in one motion if someone wants to move approval of the minutes.
So I'll approve. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March 28th and March 21st, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, well, but wait.
Discussion.
Oh, there was supposed to be discussion?
Well... There's not usually, but...
It's not usually.
It's not a consent agenda, so...
You're right.
Which is the same as the March 21st minutes, which keeps saying that I was absent.
But you were there.
But I don't think I was absent. Maybe I left the room for some reason?
You left the room for a while.
Did I?
We got it.
You did, you stepped out.
Okay, great.
About recorded. Well documented.
Okay, so there's no motions to amend. You're comfortable with the minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, I will make sure we have discussion. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the bleacher bid. Is that for Grant or for...
Yeah, I can talk to it. You all got the recommendation. And this is another kind of good news item. The bid was actually just for bleachers here and at the middle school and for gym curtain at the middle school. In the hopes that maybe the bids would come in low enough, we asked for alternates for a gym curtain here as well as the middle school and to repair or replace some backboards here at the high school. So the bids actually came in well enough to accept the alternates. So we're getting two sets of bleachers, two gym curtains, and we're getting the backboards replaced here. So all of that was within the amount and the recommendation was to approve A-plus athletic products as the lowest responsible bid at $152,000. And we had 152 budgeted budgets.
Was one of the high school curtains in the bond?
No. As far as inside the gymnasium itself, without the locker rooms and surroundings, the gymnasium itself, the only really... The only in the bond really related to the gymnasium itself was HVAC, ventilation type of activities, and the roof.
Any other questions for Grant? A motion to approve the bond?
I move we approve A-plus athletic products. Bid for gymnasium work with the high school and the middle school.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's a new teacher contract. Is there a motion for approval of the teacher contract?
And that's from these, is that what that is?
That's the blue.
I will move to approve the teacher contracts.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You can pass the blue sheets into Ryan either now or at the end of the meeting. Oh, man, even reading D's.
I know, I'm just looking at this.
All right, we're moving on to the VeeMers item and I'm not even going to read the whole thing. Just going to let you take it away.
This is probably one in a long line of activities that the board is going to have to approve or action items the board will have to approve as a new entity. So both Roxbury and Montpelier currently offer VeeMers as the retirement. But as a new entity, VeeMers requires that the board make a statement that says that they will allow administrators without teacher licenses to participate in VeeMers under Group C and all other eligible employees to participate under Group B. This is basically status quo. This is what we have and Roxbury has, but since it's a new entity, they need something recorded that you have made that decision.
So for anyone in the public who is following along and still awake, VeeMers is the retirement system that our non-teacher employees participate in, which is the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System. And on the bottom of the memo from Brian carrying over the second page is the language for a motion. If anyone wants to do that.
I move to allow administrators without teachers licenses to participate in VeeMers under Group C and all other eligible employees to participate under Group B.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for that. And then the approval of the Visbit Power of Attorney and Member Agreement next. But you also have your packets.
This will be number two in that long line.
Right.
And there will be more in future meetings. But both Roxbury and Montpelier use the Vermont School Board's insurance trust for general liability insurance, workers' compensation, and employment. So whenever you do that, Visbit gets a Power of Attorney and a Member Agreement that Roxbury has done as part of Washington South and we have on file with Visbit for Montpelier. This is the... These are the exact same documents that we already have on file with them, but unfortunately, it's as Montpelier Public Schools. So they need the same documents, but as Montpelier Roxbury. And so if I assume we're fine with Visbit, I'm happy with them. So if we're okay with it, then we just need to approve the Visbit Power of Attorney and Member Agreement and authorize me to sign those documents and send them back. So we're on course to have our coverage as of July 1.
So it's a trust that provides our... Basically provides our liability and workers' comp insurance. And a lot of school districts participate in.
School Board interference. Most school districts use Visbit. I'd say probably 90% of the schools.
Yeah, I would say something in that regard.
Yep.
So I move we approve the Visbit Power of Attorney and Member Agreement and authorize business manager Grant Geisler to sign documents.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the Visbit motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is... The next thing is what Grant talked to the Montpelier Board about briefly earlier, the approval of the declaration of intent to reimburse bond expenses.
Paul Giuliani, who wears many hats, in this case he's bond counsel. He recommends that everybody who gets a bond should have an approval of declaration of intent to reimburse bond expenses. What that allows you to do is we want to give bond proceeds until probably sometime in July or maybe early August. If we are incurring a lot of expense up until that time for architectural work or anything else that might happen, if we have this declaration of intent to reimburse, then I could go back with bond proceeds in July or August and I could reimburse our general fund or our fund balance and charge it to the bond. So I'm not sure we would do that, but I do want the flexibility to be able to do that. And I think there's language on that as well as far as the... Is there for the motion?
To approve the declarers.
To reimburse expenses.
Does the part about Tammy Legacy need to be in the motion?
No, but we'll just... She'll... Like she did for the last bond-related recommendation from Mr. Giuliani.
So I move we approve the declaration of intent to reimburse bond expenses.
Second. Any discussion of this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the last action item is the approval of the People's United Bank Resolution.
And this is only one that we'll need. We use People's United Bank for a scholarship fund. And since we don't anticipate any activity on that account between now and July 1st, we can go ahead and transfer that from Montpelier Public Schools to Montpelier Roxbury. And we will have another resolution kind of like this, probably right near July 1. And you may not... Well, I'll try... I'll probably have you approve it right before the summer break to get like our community national accounts transferred as well. But this is just one of those bank accounts. I think it's specifically for the scholarship. And I will need at some point to contact Jim Murphy because you'll have to sign this one eventually if you approve it. And it's long and drawn out, but they are very standard documents that I reviewed.
Grant, I'm curious. Sorry. The second page has a list of people who are authorized signers. Shelley Quinn was the only name I recognized on there. Were those other folks with the bank or were they...
They are...
It's on the back of the...
Those are... I can let you know those. Those are the members of our Crafters Edge team.
Right. So the scholarship account is the Corey Fund. And then there's also one other account and it's Crafters Edge that is set up separately. And so those names are teachers within the district and that would apply just to the Crafters Edge. The first page, which has Shelley Quinn and my name on it, that's the one for the scholarship.
So different accounts, different...
Two different accounts, right. And the Crafters Edge is very small.
Those three teachers are our middle school special teachers.
Which runs Crafters Edge as this is, so therefore has a...
They make great furniture.
It's a good program.
And ayes.
Ayes, yes.
Do you guys know about Crafters Edge?
I don't know.
You will.
Well.
I didn't recognize the names.
It's a really good program.
So in the eighth grade, each... Every year, the eighth grade has a company that's called Crafters Edge. At the end of seventh grade, the seventh graders apply for jobs in the company for the following year. They have to submit applications, they have to get references, they get interviewed. It's sort of what, you know, how you get a job in life. And then they run the middle school dances as fundraisers. They sell baked goods and you can order pies, you can order cookies, you can order quiches anytime from the kids who are cooking for Crafters Edge. They have a big craft sale in the fall where they sell a lot of their wood products. As Bridgette said, you can get a lovely table, they have beautiful Adirondack chairs, they have cutting boards, there's something for every budget point.
They'll make a drawer organizer to your exact specifications of your drawer and exactly how. Awesome.
Yeah, they do really good work and they... And they put on a dinner theater, which is coming up at the beginning of May. I think it's May 3rd and 4th. They'll be performing the Madagascar. If you know the movie Madagascar, they're putting on the play of Madagascar and they have a dinner. And it's here at the high school and the community is welcome. You can buy tickets for the dinner and the show or just the dinner or just the show. And they... The kids make a great, usually Italian pasta kind of dinner, but fancy-ish, sure. It's not just a big bowl of spaghetti, it's a good dinner. And they put on a great play. And at the end of the year, they can use the money that they raise through Crafters Edge for an eighth grade trip. And they also choose some community organizations to donate a portion of their proceeds to. They give some money back to the seventh graders coming up as seed money for their Crafters Edge and they bring some of it to the high school for their class activities.
Thank you.
More than you ever wanted to know, but it's a cool program and Roxbury kids will get to do that. And you should all come to see Madagascar because it's great. Especially King Julian, not that I would know.
Yes, I understand.
Well, there's that.
Awesome. All right. Any other questions for Grant about the bank?
And if not, then I guess the motion would be to approve the resolution and authorize the chair to sign. And I will contact him to make that happen.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and give permission to the chair to sign.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you, Grant, thank you for keeping us on track. And also, the memo was great, Brian, thanks.
Thank you, Grant.
Great.
Could I ask, before we jump to the next section? So some of the policies we had listed for second reading, first reading wasn't totally accurate. Does that make a difference, how we start this? If we have to get that corrected now or if it is okay to continue with the way they presented?
I think we should probably correct the second reading piece.
Yeah, because some of that's...
So it's the board member conflict of interest, B. C, board member code of conduct, D, board superintendent relationship policies will be discussed tonight, but because we didn't reach them the last time.
Oh, that's right. So they're still in first reading technically.
Okay. Shall we say that we do that, that we move them up to first reading?
You can. I mean, it doesn't... So the reality for this is there's no... There's no minimum or maximum number of readings. So if you read a policy on a first reading and there's no substantive changes, it can be adopted at the next meeting. The critical part is that there's a 10-day warning for adoption. So we can certainly be clear about what's first, second, or third, but ultimately, it's not... The most critical point for us is that we give the 10-day warning for when they are ready to be adopted.
I don't think it affects the order in which we take things. And I... So just so... This is sort of outlined in the memo, but just so folks are clear. Tonight, we're going to talk about the conflict of interest, code of conduct, and board superintendent relationship as a discussion. Those are really in a draft form and really just looking for a fairly robust discussion and input on where we're going with those. The... Everything else in the list under second reading are things that we have already discussed. A, we need to revisit the inter-district school policy. It has changes, we're definitely going to revisit. And then I think E, F, G, and H, substitute teachers, fiscal management, budget execution, volunteers, and work-study students. We did talk about it in the last meeting. We're not adopting them tonight because they had not been on the website. And now they are, in my understanding. So they'll be up for adoption next week. So we don't have to have substantive discussion on those.
Well, they actually know...
We can if people want to.
I apologize, they can't be up for adoption next week because that won't be within the 10-day warning. So they'll be up for adoption at the first meeting in May.
Okay. And then you had a question too?
No, I actually have a comment. As I was reading through all of these policies today, I thought to myself, first of all, I wanted to thank you and Ryan and Steve of the Policy Committee for... This is a lot of work. But I was... It occurred to me that it's an unusual place to be in to have a whole board read all of the policies that will be in existence before they're in existence, which is July 1st. And it's an interesting thing to me. You usually get handed a big policy book and maybe you look at a couple policies, but we will have read them all, so I thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina. All right. So I think we should start with the first reading ones. We'll start with those and then we might switch around the order on the second reading, we'll see. But these are the three that we are looking at for the first time as a new board. Alcohol and drug-free workplace, drug and alcohol testing of transportation employees, and prevention of employee harassment. Brian gave us all an additional document, which I somehow already managed.
Steve, if you need the... And the packet that's further stuff on the right?
It's not the ones we got here.
Is relevant to... No, I don't think... Oh, is it? Yep, it's relevant to the drug and alcohol testing for transportation employees.
Got it.
Okay. So these I'll turn over to Brian.
Sure. So these are from the mentor list from the VSBA website. Lori and I went through these. They are similar to the ones that are already in effect for both Montpelier and Roxbury. There are no substantive changes that we are recommending to either one of these. What I did want to point out, and that's why I gave you the extra packet, because the drug and alcohol testing is so minimal, I thought it would be helpful for the board to see what our current bus company, Student Transportation of America, does in terms of a comprehensive drug and alcohol testing program with the caveat that we are out to bid for our next busing contract. So this, for the time being, is in effect while we are partnered and contracted with Student Transportation of America. We will have something similar with whomever else we contract with if we end up not going with Student Transportation of America.
Do they do random drug tests?
Yes, and that's covered in there. There are percentages by which they go... They review and go by and employees must sign off on the randomness of the drug and alcohol testing.
So I drive the senior citizen bus and they drive up in a truck and call out somebody like me to go in to be drug tested on a random basis.
I don't know if that's how it works for SDA, ma'am.
It happens.
Okay. The one about an alcohol and drug-free workplace is really simply about notification of it. If any individual is convicted or pleads nolo contendere, that would be a recommendation to you as a board, depending on the circumstances, for dismissal. And in terms of the prevention of employee harassment, again, very much boilerplate in both what Roxbury and Montpelier Public Schools already have in effect. So no substantive changes.
So I have a question about the alcohol and drug free.
Sure.
It's really just a clarification. This is a policy that governs people that work in buildings. It is not relevant to students.
No, but each building, specifically the high school, has its own drug and alcohol requirements and those are listed in the handbook. So yes, this is just for employees, that is correct.
I was glad to see there's someone other than the principal you could report to lest the principal be who you are reporting on.
Yes, if we've had recently.
We're not taking action on these tonight, so we're not reading your motions. If anyone has questions, just to be sure, we're going through...
Comments or anything?
Questions on the alcohol and drug-free workplace or comments on that policy?
So just to bring up a comment, with my day job, we had to undergo a legal review of our alcohol and drug-free workplace policies in light of a couple of things, including anticipated legalization of marijuana and how that would affect potential drug testing after accidents or incidents. As it turned out, our current policy, the attorney felt, was strong enough, but just to raise a flag perhaps that someone might want to take a second look at that that has a better iden...
Thank you very much, I appreciate you bringing that, it was not even on my radar.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the transportation? Or the prevention of employee harassment?
Yes, true.
Okay.
I think harassment was very thorough, so seems really good. Thank you for the detail.
The harassment one is fairly similar to the student harassment.
We are required to have each one. They're each separate required.
Yep. And procedures come with, again, much like the student one, so...
Can I... I'm sorry, harassment, is this... Is the legal standard on this for action by the district, is that in statute? So in other words, is this under procedure? You know, I'm not familiar with the harassment laws and how that plays out. I'm familiar with like bullying and that kind of stuff. And there's a... There's a pretty strong standard where the district must take actions.
And that is the case. I mean, if you see the, under the duty of to investigate, we are required to investigate the harassment even if the complainant does not wish to proceed with a formal complaint. So it's essentially much like how all of our... All of the adults that work within proximity of students are mandated reporters. We are mandated investigators if we learn in some way that harassment may have taken place. Even if I approach you as the potential complainant and say, "It's understood from a conversation I had with Tina that this conversation was held and directed at you." You could potentially confirm it and say, "But I don't wish for this to go forward." That is not... That will not deter my investigation.
And would there be a set of procedures not written here that says how you do that?
I will tell you that anytime we've had either one of these, I've been quickly in consultation with our legal team and have outlined the procedures that we will take in order to do that.
So it's done on a case-by-case basis?
It's done on a case-by-case basis.
I mean, there is some...
It says it here.
There is procedure in this policy.
Right. Right, but it's not as...
It's not quite as detailed as the rest of the policy, but...
And these categories are the employment categories for protection, is that... I don't know if you recognize that this is mirroring the...
Oh, the list of protected categories? I think these are the protected categories. The public combination.
Nothing in addition to it, in other words, or... I mean, I'm sure it said a minimum that. Okay.
Looks good.
These will be back on a future agenda.
If there are no further concerns on these, I would propose that we warn them for adoption at the May 2nd, it sounds like? At the first meeting, let's say the first meeting in May. The will of this board for these three? Thank you.
So on to the ones that are currently listed under... Second reading. And then we've moved things around. Why don't we... Do we want to talk about the transfer policy, Ryan?
Sure. So it seemed like a discussion the board had two weeks ago regarding the district elementary school transfer policy was, we liked the direction, we want more specifics in there, make it very clear-cut in terms of what to expect. So that's what we put forward for the second draft that's in front of us tonight is, again, kind of that same theme that we're, at this point in time, not anticipating students transferring regularly between elementary schools. So we outlined what parents might expect to see if they were to ask to do so.
And the section where the line is drawn through it, you're taking out.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Those are deletions.
And so, since I didn't prepare the discussion last time, the question I have is, it says the Board of School Directors will consider parent requests for industry transfers. Does anything happen before that that's... Does anything happen before that that does not indicate? In other words, if I am a parent and I wish a transfer somehow to my student, does something happen before it comes to us?
Good question.
Yeah, so a lot of the other policies, I think I knew this in conversation the first time around, but a lot of the districts that we looked at, or that I looked at, drafted this policy regarding elementary school and industry transfers. They allowed it, so their policy was much more in-depth in terms of details on how that's implemented and who does what. So those districts who would have had essentially an expected transfer of students between buildings had pretty much everything geared towards a superintendent or the administration.
Geared toward them meaning they were making the decision?
Right, things weren't coming, the decision wasn't coming to the board in those districts who were expecting a lot of transfers. So they were different there, but, no, we don't have anything in terms of, well, I've personally been asked. You know, we don't have a policy on it yet, but, you know, it had a conversation, but you're right, there's no procedure, there's nothing to tell us that we should send them to the principal, or we should send them to the superintendent, or write a letter to the board for what to do.
I mean, we usually take advice from the administrators, and if they hadn't been consulted, for example, it'd be hard to get advice.
Right. So is it, so maybe just put some more specifics in here in terms of how requests should be sent, how they're handled? Would that be?
That's what I was thinking, what's the rest of the board?
Well, I mean, I, I think that, yeah, I think it might, just simply adding something like that the board shall act on the, or shall, you know, act on the recommendation of the superintendent, or shall, you know, something like that. If, if the board wants to retain authority to make the final decision. But the other thing is that, I mean, effectively, this is, this is a policy of permission, so it's saying we will do it. It doesn't quite say that, it says we will do it if these things are met effectively. So we're, we've changed this around, instead of saying we're not doing it, we are doing it.
Yeah, I mean, does anyone?
I, I mean, I'm not sure we resolved that either way, maybe you, Ryan, you have a memory of that, but it feels like if we're saying yes, it's okay, I mean, at the big, the big caveat, or the big, if you want to circle one phrase in here, it's student needs. Student needs are, is a very large undefined issue here, and so it still leaves us with that subjective standard that somebody's going to have to weigh against the other stuff. So, and maybe that's why we want it, but it's a pretty big hole.
I guess I'm concerned that we've lost the concept that it would be only in extraordinary circumstances, because it's...
Yeah, it doesn't read that way.
It doesn't read, I think it does kind of read now, like, this is something you can ask for, and we need to tag your questions. Does anyone think, I just want to keep pursuing the issue that Tina raised, does anyone think it should be the superintendent's decision and not the board's decision?
I mean, I think anything we tell, we put in policy as a superintendent's decision should probably come to the board if a person disagreed with it.
But it would be, it would be someone coming to us saying they disagreed with the superintendent's decision,
as opposed to coming to us to make a decision. Honestly, I hadn't really thought about it.
Well, I was just thinking, how it read to me the first time was, I want to transfer my child, I'm going to the board. That's the way it reads. We don't let anything like that happen, without a process, how you get to the board. I'm not saying you shouldn't come to the board, I think you should eventually, perhaps, but why wouldn't somebody else have solved this problem before that?
So I did have a similar...
We could do it similar to the tuition waiver thing, where, right now, if somebody requests a tuition waiver for 60 days, I think Brian can approve it, but for longer than that, Brian actually brings it to the board if he is going to recommend that it should be approved. So it might be that they make the request to the superintendent, who will then forward requests that have merit to the board for approval, or, I don't know.
Either way, that's a, the board making the decision though, because hat shot merit, or whatever that phrase we want to use is, someone's going to just feel that it has merit.
Right.
That's what's coming up.
I think what Brian was, at least nodding his head at last time when we were discussing this, was give, give some more structure about what standards we're using for approving, and student needs is maybe as strong as we want to be, but, you know, this is saying it's all good, as long as we can demonstrate all of these things. That the capacity of the school's there, the staffing will work, the student has a need, the transportation works, and the class sizes work. As long as all that happens, it happens. I mean, that's how I would read this if I were a parent. And I think in most cases, we're going to be able to do a few a year if we do that. And is that, is that what we want? And then they stay in that, and then they stay in the, in the school until they matriculate from that school, which means that then we build a new capacity around that new, being able to predict that new student body size moving forward, and then perhaps the next year there are more coming in. Now some may matriculate out, so, but I just don't know what our, what our objective is in terms of preserving the, the school and Roxbury also. As a, as a community school.
Well, is that, should that be added in some way of consideration? If we feel strongly enough about that, if ten people decided from Roxbury they wanted to go to Union, there's a real problem.
Well, Bridget had a, or, just alluded to this, well, last time we talked about this idea of the extraordinary student need somehow. You know, that we were going to make the decision based on student need, we're going to make everything, we're going to part the waters for a student who has a, who has the need. We're not going to, we're not going to let anything stand in the way if they, if there's an extraordinary student need. But that's a pretty high bar, and if we could figure that out, because we are one district, we're going to take care of students the very best we can, no problem with a transfer if it really is an extraordinary need of some sort, and we don't, how do you define that short of, you know, how do you define that?
Well, we as a system might recommend transfer for extraordinary needs, special ed might recommend it for something, I...
This policy is not about that.
Right.
Or what?
Special ed, that decision would be made in the I U P team, and that would be something that the board would honor, I'm confident.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with Steve with all the points that he is making. I, I think the, I, I would be cautious and would, would suggest, perhaps, that the board think about, at least in the beginning, a higher standard, simply because there is a commitment to preserving the, the community at, at the Roxbury Village School, and I, I think, I think, I'll, I'll say this, I'm sure this will resonate with Tina, as well as anybody else who's been in the classroom. I think it's always easier to start off a little stronger than you need to be and, and back it off a little bit if you find out that that's, that you're having too many requests that you can't honor, as opposed to having it be a little looser and then try to, you know, like to Steve's point, oh, we have 10. Now we have to make this stronger, because we are, we are struggling with the capacity issue. That, that's just something for, for the board to consider, because I know of this board's commitment to the viability of the Roxbury Village School as part of this, as part of this merger.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
If before, between the first sentence and the second sentence, if we said something like, in extraordinary, in, in some extraordinary instances, the superintendent may recommend that it is in a student's best interest to be served in a different school than the Board of School Directors will consider that recommendation and decisions will consider, but are not limited to, et cetera.
That's good.
So it stays with the students, it doesn't come back to families, so that's good.
Did we already resolve that one? We didn't want it to be extraordinary family or student situation?
I just said in extraordinary, there may be extraordinary cases in which the superintendent may recommend that it's in the best interest of a child, or may find that it's in the best interest of the child, too.
You want to use that standard?
That wasn't what you said the first time, I'm pretty sure. Maybe I'm wrong, I think it's that the superintendent may recommend that a student would be best served in a different school, or...
I definitely didn't say that. I said, the student's needs would be, or it's in the student's best interest?
I probably stopped writing too fast. Superintendent may...
Word extraordinary and best interest to me are two different words.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm saying it's extraordinary because it's very unusual, it would be a very unusual circumstance for the superintendent to find that a child has to be served in one, or, you know, in a specific elementary school. We want to convey that that's extraordinary, non-ordinary.
As a board, we're saying, we would do this transfer only in extraordinary circumstances.
If the superintendent recommended it to us on the basis of it being in the best interest of the student. And we're not going to try to preview what all those circumstances might be.
It's better to leave it simple.
It'd be like, it's like, if there are extraordinary circumstances, then potentially a child's best interest would be at this other school. But you can't have the best interest separate from extraordinary circumstances.
Right.
Is that? Is that approach generally working for those?
So then we'll bring back a draft that has things going to the superintendent first, highlighting extraordinary circumstances, staying focused on students, not families.
I think from the decisions point on, that's all good, personally.
So would we like to keep it? So right now, if someone were to be granted a transfer for whatever the circumstance was, would we like to keep it that they stay in that school until they move on to middle school, or do you think it makes sense to have them just for the remainder of that academic year?
No, I think if you...
I think we want them to stay put so that we can...
Yeah, you don't plan on back...
That's why we stuck it that way this time, but, yeah.
Yeah, if that makes sense. I mean, I'd like the idea that there might be extraordinary circumstance, because the extraordinary circumstance could be a short term.
It could change.
Right.
We might have room for that, but not in the normal. Any other input on this? This is a tough one.
So we'll have another draft of this at the next meeting, and I'll label this as a third reading. People okay with that? Okay.
So you also have in front of you these draft policies that are part of kind of a core governance, policies for the board, and that's the board superintendent relationship, the board member conflict of interest, and the board member code of conduct. I'll talk briefly about the board superintendent relationship, and then Ryan is really more responsible for the conflict of interest and code of conduct. First of all, disregard the numbering. I just have the numbering thing's one when I draft things, because we don't have a packet of policies together yet for governance policies, but, so the board superintendent relationship is a stab at redrafting that provision that we have in the M P S policies, which is called that, and sets up the, the division of labor between the board and what's delegated to the superintendent. So it's a stab at redrafting it in a way that is shorter, is not phrased in the negative the way the classic policy governance policies are drafted. And otherwise, tries to, I guess, tries to, you know, just expand a little, expand a little bit on the evaluation piece, so I'll start at the beginning. In terms of what's similar and what's different. The, one, the board would direct the district's operations only through the superintendent, that's pretty similar to the classic policy governance model. The board acting only as an entity is certainly, you know, we talked about that at the retreat, that's a very similar concept. The board supervises the superintendent and not district staff, again, that is also, you know, basically the way the policy governance model works, that you're working through the superintendent. The board role in hiring, dismissal, and discipline, that's just an effort to simplify what's in the current policy. Then there's the section on, because the board's most important role is to create policy. That part is really still a work in progress for sure, because we haven't really talked about how we're going to structure the policies in this district.
Well, I was gonna say...
So, we have to...
When I read that one, I thought, well, we can't really do that one until we decide what our model of governance is.
Well, I think we made a lot of progress towards that on the, at the retreat, right?
We did, but, you know, things like policies, right.
Figuring, you know, it all sort of fits together, it's kind of a jigsaw puzzle, the pieces all fit together. But right, we need to make more progress on what kinds of policies we envision having. And I would flag under 1.4, you know, this discretion piece, this, again, it's phrased differently, it's because it's not using that negative phrasing from the policy governance model, but it's the same concept that the superintendent gets to interpret the policies and adopt any reasonable interpretation of the policies, and that's part of the delegation of authority. And that, so that language there, under 1.4, near the end, the board must respect and support decisions made by the superintendent that reflect a reasonable interpretation of an existing ends or operational policy, even if the board or its members may have made a different decision. That's, that's basically saying, if, if it's a reasonable way to interpret the policy, it goes.
Do we define reasonable anywhere?
That is not defined in the current policy, it's a very good question.
What was the question?
Yeah.
Is the word reasonable defined anywhere?
I got confused the first time I read that one, and I wonder if we, I, I don't have it right now, but if we want to think of different wording for the very last bit of that section, because it says, even if the board or its members may have made a different decision, which, when I, the first time I read it, I read, the board has to respect the superintendent's decision, even if the board made a different decision. But that's not what it's saying. It's saying, even if the board, in the shoes of the superintendent, might have come to a different conclusion, it's not...
That's exactly what it means.
Right, and so I think we made a different phrasing there, because we don't want to say the superintendent can make a decision even if we already made a decision.
Which is not right, right.
Or that we've declared some decision and the superintendent can make an entirely different decision.
Right.
It's easy to get stuck on this one, because the language can make it seem almost an unimpeachable decision, and I don't think we want that standard either. Or maybe we do, maybe we must have that standard. But my sense is that what we want is the superintendent to act without a bunch of second guessing and, and negating of, of authority. But where is the standard at which point we say, it's the unreasonable, is that the standard, when it's no longer reasonable?
That, that is, I mean, but it's up for discussion, right? This is starting from the policy governance model, and yeah, that would be the policy governance standard.
That was an unreasonable decision.
Yeah, and in fact, what, you know, an interesting point that you take from the policy governance model is, is that they say, you have to really, it really is any reasonable interpretation, if you're thinking in the back of your mind, we're just giving them discretion because they're going to do the right thing, you're not doing it right. Because that's, like, you're thinking that there's some standard that you would apply to what would be reasonable that you're not putting in the policy. So it's, it isn't about, they get discretion because we trust them to do it right. It's, we've set, we've set the policy, we've set as much as we feel like we need to say, and anything that falls under that policy that's a reasonable version of it is okay, because we've given them discretion to do that.
But if somehow they didn't follow the policy, then you would be disagreeing.
That's a different story.
That's a different story. How about?
And by reasonable, the carvers might mean like not illegal, not evidencing mental illness, not causing actual harm, but anything above that bar is...
So a good example of how this plays out in reality is where Brian comes to us and says, hey, I'm about to make a decision on something, I just need a little guidance first. Then he goes off and makes a decision. We're really happy he came to us and asked us about that first, and he probably is too, because now he's got, he's got his discretion, but he's also got, like, he kind of knows where not to go practically. But he doesn't have to do that, and, but sometimes if he doesn't do that, he feels, he gets burned, and Brian is just a placeholder at this point, because I'm not picking on him, I'm saying, hey, superintendent might feel this way. So he does it because he's smart and he's, and he's thinking about not stirring up a hornet's nest unnecessarily, but we're saying, you don't, don't do that, you don't need to do that, basically. Or if you do that, and we give you a guidance, and you ignore it, and it was still reasonable, board doesn't get to come back and say, we just had a discussion about this. Because we had a discussion, but he can ignore it. And we can't then spend the next meeting saying, why did you ignore us? And so I'm just wondering, like, are we good with this? Is this really where we want to be?
This is the time to have that conversation.
Yeah.
This is the time to have that conversation. You know, we, that doesn't have to be in the policy at all. It doesn't have to be framed that way.
It is good to define the idea that when we, when we delegate authority under a policy, we've truly delegated it, we've truly let go of it, and I think reasonable standard is, that's the idea of that, is we've truly let go of it, and we haven't held it just tight enough to be able to fight him, fight him or her.
I would agree, however you choose to go with this, I, I would simply suggest that you're clear what is truly the superintendent's work, and what is truly the board's work. And however, again, strictly or, or, for lack of a better word, at eight thirty, loosely you want to define that, it should, because you do, to Steve's point, you want the individual to have the freedom to say... It should, because you do, to Steve's point, you want the individual to have the freedom to say, this is the policy the board gave me. This is the work that I can do within the policy. I'm going to go and do this work. Or conversely, this is not, you know, I do have to check in. Or I, you know, whatever the actual parameter of the board is comfortable with extending, be clear where that line is.
Or where we say now, we say, could you please check in before you make that decision? You can be like, no thanks. Right? And that might be fine. And we need to stop asking, in effect. So, you know.
But likewise, I'd say the superintendent shouldn't come and ask us our opinion if, if the superintendent doesn't intend to listen to that opinion.
Under this policy, you can't.
I know, but I'm just saying, as a matter of practice, you wouldn't want to have a discussion with the board who said, we think you ought to do this, and then you go off and do that. Why ask? Just do it.
You could say, as a purely advisory discussion, I'm asking y'all for your opinions. I would need some guidance on this, but I retain the right to make this decision. And I want to make that clear at the beginning that I'm going to make this decision and I may disagree with what you advise me, but I want you, I would still like to hear your advice. You're my counsel.
Well, if you're that clear.
That's a good odd thing for superintendent.
It is. I mean, I might do that. I might say, look, I get to make the final call here, but it doesn't mean I don't want some opinions. I don't know. Seems politically dangerous.
Yeah. It's like a killer to me. Just do it.
So I mean, that's what, that's the place we put someone in when we say the only standard is that it be reasonable, unless we want to say, and in consultation with the board or after having heard the counsel of the board or, you know, and then, then all of a sudden you're certain you erode that autonomy and authority.
Do we have model policies for these or other districts' policies or?
The model policy for this kind of thing?
Yeah.
Is the, is the Carver model, which is what we have in the MPS.
With all the negatives.
With all the negatives. That's the model for this.
The VSBA provides?
No, the VSBA doesn't do this in the same way at all. It's, it's very, very different. And we don't have to go, so we don't have to go this route. Or we, or, you know, we could.
But we could look at what they have for how to draw that line if they.
It's, it's really not.
It's really different.
It's really different. I mean, it's really not, they don't have a policy that I think puts the categories in quite the same way.
Because they're big into that delineation. You would think they would have a description of how they make it.
I wonder what the intent is there. I would read what they have, the intent being that it's more policy by policy, maybe.
You looked at what they're, they're on what?
Well, they don't have this policy, I mean, this is not how they structure the policies. This, the concept that the Carver model has of here's the, the board superintendent relationship, here are the limitations, and here's the governance, the VSBA doesn't set that up. Just a totally different framework.
Can I, oh, go ahead. I, I looked up, Orange Southwest is a neighbor of ours and they're pretty close to policy governance. The way that they've structured it, at least according to what I could see quickly, as long as the superintendent uses any reasonable interpretation of the board's ends and executive limitation policies, superintendent is authorized to establish all further procedures, make all decisions, take, you know, essentially, they're, they're as strict as it can go. So if you don't, you don't have to necessarily go that far. You know, so you could take this, and I could send this to, to you and Ryan if you're interested. You know, you could go, I mean, instead of, I'm trying to think of how you could help here. Instead of just any reasonable, I don't know, somebody could help me words with this.
Well, maybe a reason, it's really the reasonable interpretation of what? So it's the policy and the board's, the board's current temperament. I mean, it's really what it is. It's both those things. So you're taking a policy and then you're kind of taking a temperature reading of the board and saying, I made a reasonable determination based on that. The question is, how do we codify a temperature-taking process? And I don't know that you can do that. If we really hone in on the operational policies as part of this, we're talking about, I mean, all of that work has to be done under operational policies in terms of what, how much structure do we give? And I think Bridgette said it really well, is that you kind of have your piece. You have your say when you build your policies. So you build your policies as thoroughly as you want to guide the superintendent and then you stop. And if you feel like, boy, the superintendent really blew it on that one, it's like, well, let's write a new policy next time and not, and, you know, but until then, we don't get to change it. And so if we were to look at our operational policies as our hard work in this and leave the reasonable standards so that there's a, there's at least at the end, there's a line that everyone can follow, which is, look, you delegated to me. That's it. I didn't, I did, I did something reasonable under what you delegated and you were, you were mute. You didn't say anything about that. So, I mean, think about this as budget creation time.
That's kind of how it is.
It's like, it's chaos, right? If you don't, and how do you create policy, operational policies that guide your, you don't create budget.
But that's, I mean, you've been working on that, Steve, that we're hoping to bring before the board a budget policy that is not like any policy the MPS board had before. That would put more specifics into the expectation and the process.
So that's more of a temperature reading.
Creating it, creating those expectations through a policy that says, this is what we expect to see.
But do we only do that during budget building? And do we not do that during other types of building?
I think you, I don't, I think that's entirely up to the board, right?
Because it's a very specific operational policy. It's basically, the budget policy is an operational policy. I guess we could do that for adopting new policies. We could have a operational policy on that and that walks us through more carefully. Or any other policy, we could add as much detail as we want. And I think what we identified early on was that we at least have to do that for the budget policy because that one has been a train wreck.
And I think to your point, I think you would then be able to quote unquote, limit or expand your definition of reasonability based on the policy that you write. You know, so, so that, that could almost be the temperature taker there. I mean, you could, you could craft a budget policy that says the superintendent shall not bring a budget that exceeds, that, you know, you could draw the line in the sand right there.
Or shall consult with the board.
Right. Or, or how to actually do it. And then the reasonability is, well, it says you shall consult. You did not consult. You know, so it, that becomes less black and white based on how you craft it.
I'm getting comfortable with the standard of reasonable, knowing that it leaves a lot of work in the operational policy creation sphere for us.
And what VSBA's, board superintendent relationship policy said, it says a bunch of stuff like, we'll be nice to the superintendent and his office staff, which is a good idea. But to this point, it says that the board directs the superintendent through written policies that prescribe the results the board wants to achieve.
Results, not the process.
Prescribe results.
But still, the, you're, I think you, I'm, I'm saying the same thing, Steve, that it's all about what we set out in the policies. The extent of the policy is what creates, like, the more detailed the policy is, the more constrained the superintendent is. More broad the policy is, the more we're delegating decision-making.
Or you could even just say the, the, the way that I could even see you continuing to use the word is you're limiting the scope of reasonability. You know, so, so there's either more interpretation or less.
The more we put in, the, with the tighter we make the fence or the bigger we make the fence is all about what we put in the policies. Unless we want to have, I mean, if you say anything other than this reasonableness thing, then you're creating a new, you're creating something outside of.
Yeah, I'm fine with reasonable now. Yeah. I feel better about it now.
That you're, you, if you didn't say that, you would almost be creating a weird, like, gotcha category where you're like, the superintendent has to carry out all the policies, except we can at any time say that that's not what we want.
That's it. That's it. It's the universal clawback.
So we don't, I don't think we want that.
In the current MPS policy, also in this board superintendent relationship policy, which is here in 1.5, is the monitoring piece, which we did not really get to at the retreat in terms of talking about whether that's something we see as part of the.
In the forens at the bottom where you've got a question, I'd substitute all mandated policies. You've got everything else standard, but.
Right. But you would say it's supposed to be monitoring on all the policies, which is not.
Well, you've got ends, compliance with ends, operational, and all mandated policies. In other words, all mandated policies plus, yeah.
Actually, those are ones that must be monitored. It's, it's an interesting point because that's not, under the MPS board, they, I don't, the things that we think of as the mandated policies weren't really in the work plan for monitoring.
No, we were only monitoring the ends and limitations.
Yeah. But I would think the mandated.
Because the ends took care of the goals and the limitations were just like compliance with.
Some of them touched on.
Right, right. There were certainly.
And you wouldn't be able to do all of them at once. I think it would be a good idea to set up a schedule.
So the thought that I had, which I put in here for discussion was, if, if folks want some plan of monitoring to continue as part of the way the board works, that instead of putting the monitoring schedule in a policy, we should commit to that being part of the work plan that we adopt every, every year. We have an annual schedule. There's a point at which we're supposed to start the annual schedule, which in theory could be May, you know, for the next year and you start it. And at that point, we would say, like, this is the end policy we're going to do this year. Or we're going to do all the ends this year. You know, we're only going to do one. Or we're, you know, whatever it is, we're going to do it.
The previous calendar included all the ends and all the limitations.
Yeah. And my sense is that we couldn't do all that.
We couldn't do.
Like, it was really hard to do it all.
The big problem with the ends was that before we did an end report, we were trying to define the ends indicators. And that was what took a huge amount of time because we didn't have indicators.
Took a while.
The limitations were pretty straightforward. The review, the mandated policy thing is just a little weird because, you know, so Brian has to report on, are we in compliance with the alcohol and drug-free workplace? Does it tell us to do anything? You know, or like the trans, are we in compliance with the transportation policy? What would that, what would that report look like?
It says that the board must systematically monitor the superintendent's compliance with. That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily say to me that he has to give a report on every single one of them all the time. But it allows you to do some of them, not any of them, if something would come up.
I mean, some of the things that occurred to me, but I'm not, I don't know how we would operationalize this, but one, one is, are they being updated?
Yes.
Like, that's something. Are things like the right, having the right person to be the reporting? Like, you know, we've updated who the report person is based on turnover. You know, some of the other things like that, that change in the policies, like, is some, do we know we're keeping, do we know we're keeping them up to date and how is that? That's primarily the superintendent's job. How could, how would the board sort of put in place? It's the role of making sure that's happening.
Yeah, the VSBA gives us all, at the end of each legislative session, they tell us all the changes that will affect our policies. And we should put it on our calendar to review that and then schedule updates. That should come out in, you know, July or August, probably every year.
So all that likewise, I don't think needs to be in the policy. It's just part of our procedure of how we would do that. And I, and I like what you wrote about on this.
And then there's also, this is a very much a rough stab. Tina also looked at this, something about the evaluation process, which is very bare bones in the current MPS policy. This, this language is really a departure from the Carver model because, you know, in the Carver model, the superintendent's performance is the performance of the district. So there you go. Go away and evaluate that. This was an effort to come up with something more, to put some, you know, details and framework around, around an evaluation.
I think the effort here was, I love this. I think that the effort here is to, you look at the performance of the district, but you also look at the process of managing districts. Sort of the, the work of the managing process, which is separate from the performance outcome. And they both have to be very good. You have to have a high level of both. And so I think that this kind of points that idea. And you've, you've actually just created a detailed laundry list almost here.
Right. It's basically laundry.
Which is certainly more clear than the category of shall be evaluated on management process, which is kind of, to me, too vague to be meaningful.
And it's in a positive manner in preference to all those negative things that I thought told us.
I think it looks pretty good. The first sentence is the one that comes out of Carver and it's, is it clear to folks what that means? Because it's, it's, in the, in the Carver model, it's a big sentence.
Right, right.
It's like, they, it's like a mathematical equation, which is the two are equal and there is no other factor, variables in it, and this adds new variables.
Do we want, actually hadn't thought about this, but before the retreat, reviewing some of the Carver stuff, you know, Carver would really emphasize that boards evaluations of themselves is really important also.
It is.
That's a different policy, I think.
It is. That's in, that's what's now in like four?
4.4.
4.4, the, the board, that whole section four is the board's governance process.
Governance. So that's what that would fall into.
Yeah. And we should do that. I agree. We should definitely do that.
We have done, but not recently.
So those ones are fresh in my mind, so it's just, it's out there. Bridgette, can I ask? Kind of a semantics question. 1.1, the opening sentence, only decisions of the full board acting as an entity are binding on the superintendent. Do we need to include full? Should it?
Actually, we do.
Does that make sense? Or it'd just be the board?
Because, are you concerned that full suggests it has to be everyone?
All nine members.
As opposed to a decision of the board?
Well, see, that's not unanimous.
Well, the board acting as an entity is full.
Right. So maybe we could take board now, full now.
I wasn't sure if it was an issue or it might be a concern, but it did catch my.
It has to be unanimous.
Yeah, it did catch my attention whenever I read it the first time.
Yeah. Because if you take, even if you take out full, the next sentence makes it clear.
Right.
What you're talking about.
You could take out full, only decisions, the board acting as an entity.
This, by the way, that second paragraph is a.
It's new, isn't it?
It is new. I think there were pieces of it in the Carver policy, pieces of it in the VSBA policy. And I may have even found them in somewhere else. But the idea is to, actually, the VSBA policy has options on this issue. It's a, it's a really, this is an interesting question of how much you want to allow board members to interact with staff, the superintendent and with staff members. There's actually one version of the VSBA policy that says something like, you know, the board-staff relationships or board-staff communication is encouraged, but you, but the board doesn't tell them what to do.
Right.
And that's kind of confusing because.
It gets really dicey.
We are out there talking to them about what they do, but not telling, I mean, that's dicey. So we, we had some discussion about that on the policy committee. And so this was a proposal to basically, you know, try to funnel requests for information through the superintendent. But that's a question. I mean, you could say the board members could ask for things from staff members too. And I think actually, it didn't make its way into the policy, but Steve and Ryan and I talked about whether we might want to say something like, if a board member is directing a request to the superintendent, they have to copy the board chair. So that the, it's kind of like a check, like the board chair like knows what's going on. You're not asking them for permission, but.
Do y'all feel like this is a reasonable approach here? The idea here is that you're not prohibited from asking for something, but the superintendent needs to feel very, very comfortable saying, I give you that, but that's going to take more time than you imagine and I'm not going to be able to produce that, at least not in a reasonable amount of time. And so if you really want that, ask the rest of the board to, to make the motion.
Yeah, it's very clear. It says you can ask, but be prepared that he's going to say no.
Yes, I think it's clear.
And it gives superintendent a guidance to feel comfortable saying no or yes, depending on the standard.
It says it's okay to ask, but he doesn't have to deliver.
The word, the, the standard is significant, right?
Yeah.
Which is fine. Just me, that's basically anything, by the way. If it takes any effort at all, you can say no. If it takes any effort at all, you can say no, or she can say no, whatever.
However, it does indicate that then, the full board could be asked, and if the full board says yes, then the superintendent has to do it.
What I like is that the chair is not the second step here.
Right.
Because it doesn't put the chair in the, in the place of acting on behalf of the board.
Goes back to.
Or you're.
Which is what we talked about at the retreat.
Yeah.
Their message is good. Keeping it on the time. Um, so.
So that'll come back to.
Oh, it's definitely gonna come back. I mean, I, my vision on this, if others agree, is that we're gonna have to have, like, a packet of them before we act on any of them.
Yeah.
But, like, it's just really important that we kind of understand that this is all in the right direction, and we have to be thorough, and try to keep coming back with more.
Well, and, as I think we've seen already, one sort of affects the next. So you have to know what we're thinking. They'll get easier as you think.
Right, yeah. Okay. So, the conflict of interest and code of conduct are pretty related. I don't know if you want to talk about them together, Brian?
Sure, no, we could. I mean, I could give a little bit of the background, but.
Yeah.
As we're talking about these, do keep this in mind. So the, the board member's conflict of interest is a mandatory policy, required policy, set forth by V S B A. Um, both of our districts have had that, essentially adopted kind of status quo in the past. And then the board member of conduct, Roxbury had some code of conduct stuff set off by itself. The Montpelier policies had a lot, a lot of the content in. The code of conduct was included in most of the B S R, the board superintendent relationship policies in the Montpelier district. Um, so it's not new.
It's also in four point five, the governance policies.
Yep, so it's not new, new, but it is kind of all combined by itself, a new policy. Um, and we did want to have a general discussion whether or not we felt that it made sense to keep these two things as separate policies, or potentially combine them into one. But, uh, so again, your conflict of interest policy, pretty straightforward, nothing too crazy there. The code of conduct policy kind of came to fruition, one of our first policy committee meetings, the, how it came up, you know, does this board need bylaws? Um, you know, Montpelier had a city charter, there was this, there was that, does it make sense? Do we need to essentially kind of reaffirm some of the things that were decided upon in the Articles of Agreement when we merged? And so I reached out to V S B A to get some guidance there. And they're like, no, the Articles of Agreement are good to go, as they are. You know, you have your board terms, you have the number of people, how the votes, et cetera, all taken care of. You can, so consider the Articles of Agreement your bylaws for the board. But you should really have how the board's gonna operate, purely the code of conduct. Um, so, a lot of the stuff, again, has been combined from the existing Roxbury and Montpelier information. But then a lot of the stuff also came from V S B A in terms of their best practices. So like, the, what we included is the appendix, the declaration of commitment. That is literally verbatim from V S B A's essential workbook. Um, and that literally came out of their, their page. So this is straight from V S B A. Again, there's, there's a lot. It feels like it's kind of nitpicky. Um, but we figured, again, general discussion tonight, kind of get some guidance on how detailed we want to get with this, um, if it's too over the top, if it's good, it gives us a structure, um, et cetera. So, this is what we have to present and discuss. Peter?
Well, first, as always, thank you for all the work. So anything I say, I hope to make this better. So in the number two there at the top, we agree to avoid words and actions that create a negative impression on an individual of the board or the district. So I'm fine with the part about the individual, but it seems a little constricting. Like, for example, am I not supposed to say at this meeting that I'm very disappointed, as an example, that the playground is very behind schedule, and parents are upset, and I'm upset, too? I mean, that would be creating a negative impression.
Of the district.
On the board or district.
Um, I think that's just saying that a project is behind schedule. You're not saying, like, this board is mismanaging the project.
Okay. Well, not that this.
That might seem like a blind distinction.
Okay, so let me just say for the cameras and everyone else, I, this is a hypothetical. Let me think of something else. I am very disappointed that the board's management of the project to redo the baseball field is well behind, and I think we're dropping the ball. Like, to me, that is not necessarily, that is, that's critical and meant to inspire us to take action. But I am creating a negative impression of the board and the district on purpose, because I believe we need to do better. So I, I mean.
I think this is more about, like, going, you know, talking to your friends at the basketball game and being like, I just feel like the board is terrible.
Okay. So, but you could see how.
Yeah.
It does say in all situations, the board.
It does.
It, there's a little, to me, this infringes in a few areas on sort of the speech rights of an elected official. And I think you have to, I think we need to comb through it with that a little bit. I don't, I think there's, most of this is fine and good, but the areas where it feels the most nitpicky are the areas where it's, it's asking us to all be a team, you know, all be like of one voice. And I think we have to be careful about that when we're elected. And we talked about this at the retreat a little bit, and it's, you know, I, I think most of this is probably just fine, but there's a few of those spots that I think we have to be careful.
The current NPS policy says that individual members will make every reasonable effort to promote, to protect the integrity and promote the positive image of the district and one another, and never embarrass each other or the district. Just, I mean, just so you know, we're already, we're already on the other board.
We're lowering the bar.
But that doesn't mean, but that.
Followed or not, that was, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean we need to, I just, you should know that we already.
Okay.
Well, I think this, the next sentence, it says, while we encourage debate in differing points of view, we will do it with care and respect.
That's fine, that's fine.
If Peter's going to say something about the baseball field, that's fine. He's just not gonna yell at me at a board meeting and call any names.
And I agree with. I actually don't object to a board member saying what you just did.
And that, but, but I worry.
Yeah.
I worry about being told that I shouldn't be creating a negative impression of the board or district.
He uses a weapon.
And you could, someone who is, let's just say hypothetically, I was the only conservative member of this board, and everyone else is super out there. You all could use that against me, because I'm creating negative impression of the board, because I don't believe y'all should be spending all this money on doing something. And like, I just worry that, I mean, it's probably not gonna happen, but we are, like, proving it. So, I kept bringing up my two other things, and we can move on, or we can, I can keep beating this dead horse. So, I, that's all I have to say on that one. We could, we're just a bit, or.
Did you have other points you wanted to?
Well, down the list. I don't know. I don't want to skip past anyone else, same other things before.
Anyone else want to weigh in on the first couple? Do others? I, I heard Steve saying he shares that concern. Do others share that concern?
Actually, I didn't even pick up on that one, but I think that's true. I was more down in section B. And then also, later on.
I have a sec, I have section B comments, too.
Actually, I'm thinking, if, even you eliminated that whole sentence that you don't like, and just said, while we encourage debate in differing points of view, we will do it with care and respect.
I mean, I, I like what Michelle said, though. Michelle, what Michelle said is what we should be doing. We should not be disparaging the district and the board.
Right.
We should not be doing that, saying, oh, this board is terrible, we're such a bunch of losers. Like, that's not contact.
Or, or like, add, similarly, I'm just gonna keep using this basketball game context, but, you know, talking with other parents and like, oh, yeah, the district has a real problem with, you know, making, as, as parents, we are inclined to speak irresponsibly in social situations. But when we're on the board, we have to remember that, actually, we kind of represent the district, and we should speak supportively and not irresponsibly.
It, I could not agree more.
But I don't know how you express that in a way that.
Okay.
So if, what if we came up with language that was less mandatory and more aspirational?
Yeah.
That's, that was more about, you know, board members aspire to, or should.
Be positive role models.
Try, try, represent the district in.
So that we know what we're trying to do, but we're not necessarily ordering people to do things.
So, but, like, as a smaller example, again, and I, just to hone, to put a little finer point, because Michelle's right, like, I'm sitting next to Brian, we're co-parent, they were speaking out of board states. Like, that is inappropriate. I think we all get that. But like, for example, let's say, the example again, that you all have gotten super, super liberal, and I've gotten conservative. And I went to a meeting of compared to our, share my politics, and are very conservative. And I would go, you know, this board is out of line with Montpelier, and I want to suspend this money. And I think the board is way out of line with voters. Like, that's very negative. But that is, to me, a reason, like Steve was saying, that's kind of a, a free speech. Like, I want to get people to run for office and change the composition and do all that stuff. Like, that should not be seen, that's not out of bounds, to me. Maybe this is one of those Felix Frankfurter pornography things, like, you know pornography when you see it.
Yeah.
But maybe we can try to put words into it, because there has to be a free speech element, where we're trying to be constructive and do what I think is right for the board, without disparaging its members, you know, that kind of thing.
The board itself.
So, no ad hominem. So.
Oh, go to the next one, okay. So in section B, um, to be efficient and effective, long board meetings must be avoided.
Michelle slipped that one in.
I, I mean, no one likes long meetings, but.
Some people less than others.
So, I think what this is getting at, I mean, this, this, we did not make this up. This is V S B A. I'm pretty sure.
No, actually.
It just came from somewhere.
I think some of this came from Montpelier's.
I don't doubt it.
There's no way.
But I think what this is getting at.
Section B one looks very familiar, so.
I, I think what this is getting at is, you should be keeping that in mind as a board member. Like, it's not that, sometimes the board might have so much work to do, that the meeting is four hours. But as you're participating in the board meeting, you shouldn't just be, I'm not, I'm.
And I know that's what this means, but when you read this wording, someone could say, well, there's 74 people in the audience, we're not gonna hear them, because right there, we signed the code of conduct, long meetings avoided, y'all go home. And that's all I'm saying, like, we're not gonna do like a filibuster thing here. And we're not gonna have like, but there has to be more clarity that the reason to avoid a long meeting is one person going on and on and on and on, right? And.
I think Bridget's point to, to help move this conversation along is that this could be written in sort of an aspirational, you know, I think, I think, I think Bridget's.
We want to respect board members' time and use the time effectively and try to handle questions.
Instead of, you know, yeah, I mean, even.
Individual questions outside of the meeting.
Even with this, with this, um, section B one, instead of the word will, aspire to, or will try, you know, I mean, I think, I agree, that it's hard, you know, I look at the one that says to not interrupt each other. We try, I mean.
And bear in mind, also, it's not like there's any punishment, you know?
But I think, I have Peter's point.
Well, I will say, on the, on the third, to thank you, Brian. On the third page, I am asked to sign something.
Yeah. It just says you're doing everything in your power to be productive. And it doesn't say, and if I don't.
I understand, but I just worry that if somebody is against, I hear you. So also, on number three, the board will consider research best practice, public input, and financial impacts in their decision-making. And I worry, is this like an exclusive list? For example, Becky is an expert in H R, right? She has a lot of experience in human resource issues. Now, that's not listed here, like, personal experience isn't listed.
Or interests of the students are not listed.
Right. And so, so there's a lot of things not listed, and I know we can't list everything.
Right.
So it kind of concerns me to cut it off at these top five. And again, I know what everyone's getting at. We're trying to have some basis. We can't just say, well, today I feel like we should move left, and tomorrow we go right. Like, that's not, I don't.
Well, in several of the other policies, we've put in for ends not limited to.
Well, if this practice would incorporate someone's individual experience.
Okay. That wasn't clear, so thank you. That's very appreciative.
And students, educational interest.
Okay. Well, so I only have one more, but I'd like to note that I really don't comment on that many policies, so I feel like I'm getting them all out.
This is a super explicit policy.
I do, and so, I just don't, I'm not gonna go on like this for the next policy.
You could.
Well, I don't want to. So, on the appendix that, in theory, we're supposed to sign, I, maybe this is my hangup in that first paragraph, excellent return on investment for taxpayers.
Yeah, what does that even mean?
I know what people are getting at, like, people feel like it's, the amount of money, like, let's say we want to spend 30 grand a student, but all of our kids went to Ivy League, that's a great return.
Okay.
As a hypo, like, but that is not what we want to judge anything by.
Can, can I, like, back up?
I'm not very sure, though.
I, I, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure about having that language either, so I totally hear what you're saying. But this, again, this, this is the verbatim thing, right, from the.
Declaration, yes.
The declaration, yeah. Do folks generally want to go down this road? I mean, to me, that, the first question is, we have, we never did this in NPS. I don't know if you did this in Roxbury.
Oh, good. I was trying to, did I ever sign something that said something? No.
I don't know.
No.
It was when I saw, when I joined the board, it was signed. I have no idea if the past board members, Kate came on after me. I don't know if it was brought forward again after that. Uh, I'm not sure how far it continued, or when it kind of came into.
On the Roxbury board?
On the Roxbury board.
I was gonna say, somebody asked you to sign this when you joined this board?
Like I said, there's never been a day when somebody came up to the meeting and said, hey, Ryan, do you remember? Here's your declaration of commitment. That has been buried somewhere in a file for a long time, but.
I can see the pros and cons, and I think if we go down that road, Peter, we have to have a pretty robust discussion about what's in it.
Right.
But I, I guess I kind of want to start at, do people think we should do this, then we should agree on some principles that we have members sign.
What's the enforceability of it? And why are we signing it?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think it's enforceable at all. Does anyone think, are those enforceable?
You can't get canned off the board.
And what if someone's elected and says, I don't think I want to sign it?
Right, how do, um.
Yeah, that's my question.
We're gonna hang with that.
Right. And how do, how does a board member get, I mean, what's the sanction? Is there, can a board member be sanctioned in some way?
Impeached.
Can they be removed from the board if they're really terrible?
I think the only thing that comes with further process is a conflict of interest, which is in the conflict of interest policy, and that, that is part of what's in here. You would be, you're signing off to agree.
I mean, what if Becky punches you?
Yeah, there should be some consequence.
She's sitting right next to you. What if she just gets so mad that she punches you? Like, I mean, obviously, there are civil.
There is no, we do not have the ability to remove people from the board.
That's what I'm asking. There's no mechanism for any kind of consequence. I don't, so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I mean, we're just outlining what we would all like, but.
Why should, why should we have the right to remove someone from the board?
Well, it's, you know.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not suggesting we should have that right. I'm asking whether there is a mechanism to do it.
We're not debating whether to dislodge them or just not.
No, I mean, well, like, a legislature does. You can get rid of one of your members.
You can.
You can get rid of one?
I was just gonna.
We always lived in fear of that, actually.
Recently, there was.
McAllister Commodore.
That's true.
Right, right, yeah.
So, we could have one, but we don't.
I'm not sure that we could.
We don't, actually.
Okay.
I know, I'm not sure what the statutes were allowed.
Okay, so.
Good question, right?
That's in the constitution.
Fine. I, I, I don't feel the need to sign anything. I think when you slide, join the board, you read through the, you read through all these policies, and at some, and at some level, you agree to this member code of conduct, and that's your, like, your guiding light. And if you can't.
Maybe people have to sign this when they turn in their petition. And if they're not willing to sign it, they can't.
We can't, was that a?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Just be clear.
Actually, in all of that, I suggest that we dump appendix A.
Yeah, right. Second, the content.
Becky has a comment.
I have a, I have a, I have a comment. There is a reason to, if there's an unavoidable conflict of interest, say, if your husband is an architect bidding on a project here, you need to be able to publicly, in some form or manner, be able to say so, and recuse yourself from the decision-making. Do we have a process for that? yourself from the decision-making, do we have a process for that?
Isn't that in here, in the conflict of interest?
But I think we should sign to it, I think it should be identified in some way and signed to it.
So you're saying there should be a signing thing for conflict of interest, but not necessarily code of conduct?
But not code of contact, but for conflict of interest.
How does the board enforce that?
Hold up, can I just understand this question, are you saying that we, you think members should sign the code of, the conflict of interest policy?
The conflict of interest should be a public.
But that they should sign the policy, or that when they have a conflict, they should sign something?
In, in, and maybe this is weird to healthcare, but any place I've worked in the last thirty years, I've had to sign a conflict of interest document, that in the last decade or so, I've had to reveal my husband was an attorney who occasionally took cases where.
Oh, you mean, sign something disclosing what your conflicts are?
Disclosing a conflict of interest.
But also that you would disclose?
Yes, and that you make a commitment to disclose.
Yeah, I've had to sign one at my new job.
And so, I'm, you know, I, I think if we restructure this declaration, or make it a conflict of interest declaration, that would be sufficient, but if I was a member of the public, I would want to know if a member of the boards had a financial interest in the outcome of a decision of the board.
So, it's all true, the question is enforceability, so if the board has the authority to enforce something, then the, so, when you, when you're, when you are elected onto the board, we have a whole packet of policies.
Yeah, we do.
That you can ignore every single one of those policies because you've been elected, but you will become, but the board will simply, uh, enforce it themselves. The question is, what is unenforceable by the board versus enforceable? And that, that's my concern, so, um, the board can't enforce that you will, uh, not play to the audience during a debate, I mean, they could try, I guess. They can, can they enforce conflicts of interest? How does the board enforce, if they just, we see this a lot where, where a, a elected member will not disclose a conflict, everyone knows they have a conflict, they don't do it, everyone's like, yeah, but they have a conflict and they're still voting.
Yes.
And how do we, do we as a board have a?
We have a policy.
We have a mechanism for kicking that person out of the vote?
Well, we have a mechanism for having a hearing to decide.
There you go.
Whether there is a conflict of interest.
So that's good.
And if we find that there is, then we would say that we're fine.
Yeah.
Well, if we do that, then I think that's fine.
And that's, that's statutorily enforceable.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I think that's in here, even if I didn't sign it, by the fact that it's policy, it says that if there's a conflict of interest, I should be disclosing it, right?
Also, some of the, some of the language in the, that is in the declaration of commitment is maybe better than some of the language that's on the previous page on the code of conduct, and for folks on the policy committee, I would just say, before we jettison appendix A because of the offensive signature line, we should review it because some of these things might be well worded.
So just rework it, no, there's definitely, there's definitely overlap between the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we felt it was a little bit unclear, keeping them separate documents, or keeping it in an appendix, so. Yeah, if we wanna scrap, and I guess as that, the consensus of the board, the direction of the board on this is, we'll scrap the, the declaration, use some of the better language, and then come up with just a general code of conduct.
I think that'd be helpful.
And do?
I do think, I mean, I, we haven't talked about them too much, I, I just wanna say that I think both B one standards are how we engage at meetings, and I'm gonna say C, commitment to the work of the school board, you know, that these things are important, that, that they should be in the policy, that we should be, we might not be able to enforce them, but we should be monitoring and working on improving, for example, the degree to which we have equal participation in a meeting, and avoiding people dominating a discussion, and avoiding playing to the audience, and that we should be openly, I think, and candidly discussing what it means to, to be committed to the work of the board, what it means to be a participant in committee work, and to come to meetings, and to do work outside of meetings, um, because that's, that's kinda where the rubber hits the road.
Bridget, can I have an opless meeting further?
Yes, ma'am.
With the chair's permission? I, I, I'm gonna go back a, a step, because I actually think it might be useful to sign it, not with this, I would take out the sentence about agreeing to abide by it, but to sign it indicating that you've read it, and that it might be worth, um, for each new member who comes on, the chair should pull this out of the binder and be like, you really, I really want you to read this and, and show that you've read it.
But I, I might say that's part of procedure, we discussed a long time ago what we do for new board members.
Yep.
Who knows what we do, so, that, that might be part of the, the procedure for new board members, is to say for every new board member, we're gonna for sure take out these three policies, whatever they might be, and say, we'd like you for sure to read these.
These are our expectations, read it, sign it, return it to the superintendent, so that we know that, we, so that when I later say, you know, Tina, you've gotta stop doing X, and you say, well, I didn't know I wasn't supposed to do that, right?
No, it's a good idea, add some more thought, good discussion too. Um, just, my last one is the first bullet, just seems a little hokey, recognize that a board member's responsibility is to see that schools are well-run, but not to run them.
That's the BSBA.
Yeah, that's, that's the BSBA right there. Okay, they're the BSBA, we're not, like, I don't know, I've just not, is not really something I'm really willing to commit to, we've talked about all this other stuff, but that's just, it's just weak.
There's, in the, in the appendix A, the first thing about, this is the thing Peter objected to, um, which I don't think I object to, but I wanna be clear, um, basically, this goes back again to things we learned at BSBA about, there's really two things we do, one is we take care of the students, the other is we take care of the taxpayer, basically, or the owner, and the idea here is that we're gonna always do what's in the best interest of the students, but always balance it with getting a really good return on, on the dollar we spend, so, you know, that's not really codified anywhere in terms of the actual mission of a school board member, I don't think, like, I don't think that says that in state statute about why we're being elected, and, um, if that really is our, our mission statement for each of us individually, our role, um, you know, I don't know, but that's what this is effectively saying, and that's what we hear over and over again, and I think that's what this is attempting to say here, is, don't forget that this is your role as a board member, is to do this thing, which is, look out for students and look out for taxpayers, so that's it, that's all, I just don't know how to word it any better.
All some things, but it's the term return on investment that bothers me, I don't.
It's a finance term.
It is, ROI is, it's, 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 it's not the right wording, I mean, yes, I believe we should be looking at, I believe we should be counting paperclips, I do, like, I wanna know where every dollar is spent, and we are accountable for that, but to think of like, these kids as a return on investment, so like.
Do we measure them when they're twenty-four?
Yeah.
So, did I get my money's worth there?
But really, like, you may have a class of kids who are just not that great, not that many go to college, but all of them go to VOTAC or become, you know, and like, that's a great return on investment, which taxpayers thinks that's good, which don't, like, who are we talking about, like, it's just a weird term for me to use, like, to start to commit to, but yes, we should be conscious in all our decisions, how we're spending taxpayers' money, we need to do that, but that's, ROI is not the term that I'm comfortable with, so, but I, I agree with Steve, right? Those are the people we are serving, not just students, right, we're serving all taxpayers. Actually, I would even argue, we're not even serving all taxpayers, we're serving all residents of Montpelier, there are people in Montpelier who don't pay taxes, but still are part of our community.
That's very true.
Was that whole discussion at all helpful to the policy committee?
I thought it was fascinating, I feel like we, definitely.
We had expected a good, long conversation on this one.
Okay.
It's about what we're doing, um, I, I would also just add that folks should feel free to, you know, follow up after the meeting, at any time, edits or anything like that.
I've used up all my words through the evening.
No.
Don't say that.
You don't have any edits on the budget execution part? Okay, so, we also had on for second reading, substitute teachers, fiscal management, budget execution, volunteers, and work-study students, those were really only on for second reading and not adoption because of the glitch around public posting, can I guess?
So I have a comment about the substitute teachers.
All right.
And that is, it says nowhere in here that you have to have a background check, and you did say that for volunteers, and I think you should say that for substitute teachers, isn't that the law?
I thought it was covered in another policy.
Well, it, it, it does say so in volunteers, it says you have to, I forget.
Anybody who's in a teaching position has to have a back, I mean, there's anyone who is, has unfettered access to children at any time, must, can only do so with a background check.
Under which policy?
Right, but I'm saying, we don't state it under state law.
It's state law, and we don't have to, because if you're a substitute teacher, it is state law that if I put you in front of a classroom, you have a background check, and the only reason it does, it says specifically for volunteers is because you are not a teacher, and so I have to do that for you, I'm not hiring you, and so I'm not paying you, but if I'm gonna give you unfettered access to children, you do have to have a background check, if I have a volunteer who's in the presence of an appropriately background-checked educator or member of the MPS, who's an MPS employee, I don't need a, a background check for that individual, so it's state law, which is why it's not stated for substitute teachers.
Okay, as long as we do it.
Oh, that is, if you recall, and I'm sure you do.
It is the law.
Last year's Act 166 debacle was certainly around the fact that I was one of, and my colleague Lori Gossens, who's in the room, was another, who said, uh-uh, I'm not, I don't care that I'm holding up your money, I don't care that I'm, and I did, but the principle was, I don't care that you're not getting your money, this person right here, I don't know that he has a background check, and I'm not gonna release public dollars for a public school student to go into a private pre-K, if I don't know that every single person in that private pre-K has been appropriately background checked.
And not only it relates that, it was the same kind of thing, like, all of a sudden, because when this became law, background checks did not go through with any, uh, regularity, and that, I remember that first year of backup of background checks, and you had all these teachers already hired, and nobody had a background.
So, yeah, we're, I, that is done and done.
Quick question, process question, um, when we hire teachers, of course, we do the background checks, are they rechecked periodically?
So, we don't know.
No.
It's, what lawyer you're saying?
Yeah, we, we do not, as the employer.
Right.
Recheck, do background checks, but teachers are required to do that when they're licensed.
Re-licensing, yes, 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 thank you, so they have to every time, thank you for reminding me of that, I knew there was something in there.
Thanks.
Good question.
Anything else on those four policies?
So can I be clear that since, and for those who are, um, following along on TV, if you go to our website, MPSVT.org, and go under Montpelier Board of School Commissioners, and go to MRSD Policies, there is a webpage called Policies in Process, and all of the policies that we are working on are there, um, in their entirety, and can be reviewed and commented on by the public, and if anyone is having trouble accessing them for any reason, they should certainly feel welcome to contact me in the office, at two-two-three-nine-seven-nine-six, or brian@MPSVT.org, and I'll be happy to get you a copy of any policy electronically, hard copy, or otherwise.
All right.
Ward, that's my, ward for adoption, yeah, thank you.
In?
Five-two.
Five-two. Good, everyone okay with that? It's like everyone's okay with that.
So that'll be substitute teachers, fiscal management, budget execution, volunteers, and work-study students.
Yep. Okay, on the class size policy, the last policy, um, the will got changed to shall, what if we change it back to will?
Should, did we do, did we do that wrong? I thought that was in my notes.
Um, it was in the notes to change shall to will on the volunteer policy, which you did.
Sorry, I thought that that was across the board, sure.
Well, no, no, it's across the board, changing shalls to will, not wills to shall.
Got it.
So could I ask for clarification for this, because I tried to figure that out from the notes, but couldn't, so.
You weren't at the meeting.
I wasn't at the meeting, so, the, I'm just curious for a brief explanation of the multi-grade K-four elementary, I remember why it was a Roxbury thought about that, so where are we now on that?
That it's by classroom, but I'll let you know.
Right, so we, Lori and I spent a lot of time on this, and tried to run as many numbers to reasonably account for how best to support the diverse numbers that we could potentially see in Roxbury, including a class, or including a grade cohort that could have as few as zero.
Yeah.
And as many as, say, what were we thinking, Lori, like, ten or twelve, right? Um, and so, we decided instead of doing it by grade, we would do it by classroom, and with the caveat that no teacher will have more than two consecutive grade levels per classroom, so this top portion here is simply for, the, the one right here is simply for the Roxbury Village School, so in the K-four school, the minimum average number of students per classroom would be eight, optimum, we're saying is ten to twelve, and in order to account for every mathematical possibility, we're doing less than or equal to forty, which we feel would satisfy any permutation, and the way that we will do this to satisfy both reasonability and educational outcomes, is that no teacher will have more than two consecutive grade levels per classroom, so for example, you could not have one, two, and three.
Okay, and that was really put in to replace this there, right?
Yes, it is, because we didn't feel, we felt that in order to, uh, in order to support the most, um, a good policy with a lot of viability for a smaller school, rather than doing it by grade, because Lori and I just could never get around how to do it by grade with the numbers as, as we were projecting them, like, it would not, it just simply wouldn't work, and I think it was Lori who said, what if we just do it like, like, physical classroom, and that'll actually make all of these numbers work, so that was the rationale behind making that change.
On the back page, third paragraph, I would like you to consider some, a, a phrase at the beginning of the last sentence that starts, the principal has, see where I am?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would you consider the following phrase, after considering online platforms and dual enrollment options, the principal has the discretion to approve these courses offerings.
That's a pretty big change there, after considering online.
What, and, so here are my two points.
Okay.
And I, I did talk to Mike, that, um, all you're saying is considering.
Yeah.
After considering online platforms and dual enrollment options, in other words, I'm just saying, um, actually, I will say, that we are doing great at this, the, um, the percentages are up, um, I think we are doing this now, and so I actually did stop in to talk to Mike about this, because I didn't want to say anything that indicated I didn't think he was doing a great job, I think he is, I just think that it's, um, the reason I thought about it was, we haven't always done a good job at this, and I thought maybe writing it down would help us.
Heather, so now.
You know, I mean, I don't mind considering anything, I just don't know what are all the things we should be considering. You know, is this, is this, this is a, this is a narrow list based on, I think, a, um, a value or a priority of, that we should, we should be doing more of this, I'm not opposed to doing more of that, but I'm concerned that, are we just singling these things out, and I haven't had a second to think about what other things should we be considering, so that we're not, um, making a special point on maybe one or two things out of five or seven we should be considering, I don't know, but I do think this is a value statement that we throw in to a document that's, maybe has a few value statements in it, but, you know, but I'm just saying that I, I think the idea is to give it some, some numbers here, and, I don't know, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm opposed to it until I have a chance to think about what other things we would wanna consider too.
I'm also not opposed to doing a broader after consideration of, meaning.
Yeah.
Consider something before doing this.
So, one concern I have in terms of the timing, I mean, we don't have to adopt it next, the next time, but is, um, this is the third reading, and, and before we, you know, there was a process of getting input from all the principals on the language that we brought to the first reading, and I'm reluctant to change it and adopt it without having a chance to go back to the principal involved and get some input on the changes, because, you know, that's, that was part of the development of the policy, and that's the person, I think, who would have the most, uh, input from the, from the leadership team's side, yeah, so I think if we were gonna make a change like that, I would wanna at least do that step first. What do others?
I think that's appropriate.
So are we directing the principal to do something with that statement?
Yeah, if we had this other language, we are, I think.
And that's kinda stepping outside of our realm in terms of how we're supposed to be interacting with staff, I mean, granted, it's in policy, but still, I mean, I guess you could say our policies limit other staff members also besides just a superintendent, but it feels a little bit more heavy-handed in terms of telling somebody else besides the superintendent what to do or how to do it.
Would it be helpful to have something broader to the extent that the language could be proposed to Mike after considering other alternatives? I mean, I get the spirit where you're trying to go with this.
Yeah.
You know, and so that it's not, because this also goes to kind of Steve's point before about, I guess, and Michelle's too, about the reasonability of the interpretation of the policy, so if you're looking to be less heavy-handed, perhaps, you know, Mike might consider whatever I just said, after thoughtful consideration of alternatives, so therefore, it's not just the, hey, I've got discretion to go below the minimum, the bar is that, you know, and however it's reasonably construed, I considered these alternatives, and for this reason. And for this reason, and this reason, this reason, it didn't necessarily fit in the mission or values or how about that. Because then it kind of gets to what you're thinking about, but it also doesn't say, "You have to think of these two things as well." Would that be? That said, your timeline is a reasonable question, too, so I'm just, I'll split the difference here.
And Ryan, usually in policy, we don't even refer to the principal, because we refer to the superintendent.
Right.
That is true.
We could just delete that whole sentence.
I think if we deleted the sentence, that would really change the meaning of the policy. I mean, it's trying to... We're trying to specifically say, "You can bring the minimum average below."
Well, I thought the sentence before that said that, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure the second sentence is clear enough to, to say it's okay if the minimum average drops below in that content area. Any other comments on this? So we can
For three?
get a reaction about that proposed language. I have two proposals there. "After considering online platforms and dual enrollment," or "After considering other alternatives." I mean, I prefer the more general language, I think. But we'll get some reaction and put this one back on for next week.
Yeah, we, yes, because it's not going to be adopted. Sure. That's, absolutely. Ryan, out of procedural, do you want to try to get the in-district elementary school transfer policy on for the eleventh, or do you want to wait till the second? And I'm okay either way.
I think I could rather come up with a draft. Bridget, Steve, do you guys think you'll have a chance to go through some iterations in the next week? So you'll need it by Friday?
Which is two days from now? You want to shoot? Why don't we shoot for the second? Let's, let's keep it really reasonable. Let's keep it reasonable.
I was thinking Wednesday.
Third reading will be on five-two. Okay. That's helpful. And you'll just give me feedback on how you want to put the language in, or if you need it, just email to Mike.
So, thanks, everybody. Anyone have any further praise before adjournment?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bridget, thank you for having such a tidy meeting.
All right, no motion to adjourn?
I'm ready for your adjournment.
I'll second it.
Fall in favor?
All right.
Bye, everybody.